Real first, you know, formal meeting that we've had here. And I hope you you enjoy the new home. And at this point, I call the meeting to order and ask Pastor Dee Dee Carson from the First Presbyterian Church to come forward.
Good evening. Let us pray. Living God, who is known by many names and in all times and in all places, we ask your blessing to be upon this gathering and upon all who have been called to lead this community where we live and work and play. Grant them wisdom. Grant them ears to hear and eyes to see the way forward that is best for this city and all of its citizens. Grant them curiosity and courage and hope as they go about their work. And we ask, oh, God, that you would continue to bless all who serve this beloved community, the elected officials, the committed citizens, the city workers and community organizers and so many others who work hard to make our community the best it can be. This evening, as we gather, may we all remember that first and foremost, we are neighbors. That no matter our opinions, race, age, socioeconomic status, religious affiliation or sexual orientation, that we are neighbors who are called to care for each other, to know each other, to live alongside each other as best we can. So where there is discord, may God bring peace. Where there is distrust, may God sow trust. Where there is hate, may God bring love. And may we always have our eyes on the margins as we do the work of building a strong community. May we remember those who are hungry, without a home, alone, those who are ostracized or forgotten. And may we make space for them to thrive in our community as well. So, God, this evening, grant these leaders and all who enter here the wisdom and the courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we listen when it's time to listen and speak when it's time to speak. May they and we always be guided by a spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, by the spirit of love. This we pray and this we hope. Thanks be to God. Amen.
Amen. And pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of Justice for all. All right. Thank you. Madam Clark, do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I would like to have a motion for the certification of the closed session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
I'm sorry, the vote is not open. You'll need to slow down just a bit with the new system.
It's a Jersey thing, Amanda.
Thank you. Um, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
All this new technology takes more time.
Mr. Moss made the motion. Who sec-- Mr. Branch made the second. Thank you. The vote's open.
Why is it not showing up there?
Thank you. By a motive of vote of 10 to zero, you've certified the closed session and being in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, you know, we had a discussion in closed session and it was a very robust discussion. And at the chair's discretion, I'm going to go ahead and move the appointment process, you know, for this over forward for now. And now the Bayside vacancy. Are there any nominations for appointment to the Bayside District Council seat? Yeah?
Yes, I'm nominating Charlotte Zito.
Okay, Charlotte Zito, okay. If you vote for Charlotte Zito--
nominations.
Okay, we'll get the other nominations, okay? Any other nominations? Mr. Belucci.
Mayor, I nominate Delcino Miles.
Delcino Miles, okay. Are we concluded on nominations? Okay, at this point, the instruction, if you vote for Delcino Miles, hit the yes button. If you're, if you vote for Charlotte Zito, press the abstain button. The clerk will now call for the vote.
The vote is open. So if for voting for Ms. Miles, you hit yes. If you're voting for Ms. Zito, you would hit abstain.
It's not on our screens.
I just put a second one, a sec, just create one. So it was, um, nope, it was on Mr. Belucci. Mr. Moss. Mr. Belucci and Mr. Moss.
I apologize.
That's gonna be a problem because if the second automatically--
We can, we can adjust. We can, we can adjust our minutes. Uh, so that's fine.
Okay, once again, if you vote yes, that would be for Delcino Miles. Abstain would be for Ms. Zito. Vote is open.
So with nine for Ms. Miles, two, two for, no, one for Ms. Zito, the appointed newly appointed council member is Delcino Miles.
Okay, thank you and congratulations. And I think I can speak, you know, you know, for counsel a bit here and thank the other two candidates that came forward. It was a tremendously difficult decision. But, but once again, you know, we really appreciate the process. Thank you very much. Okay? All right, at this time, we're gonna move forward with the inform-- I need somebody to approve the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of July 12, 2022 and the special formal sessions of August 2, 2022.
I move that we approve the minutes for both sessions.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor and a second from Mr. Moss. Okay, vote is open.
One second, please. The vote is open. Councilmember Wood, may I have your vote, please?
Mine?
Thank you. By a vote of 10 to zero, approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, thank you. You know, one of the honors we have as a council are honoring the members of our community that make our community so great. And tonight is no exception. It's with great honor that we honor Mr. Ramon Breeden. Mr. Breeden, can you come to the podium, please? Yeah, right there. We're gonna call it the hotspot. How's that sound? Okay?
He's seen that before.
Yeah. Been there and done that. All right, on behalf of our council, I am proud to read this. Whereas Ramon W. Breeden Jr. was born in Richmond, Virginia in 1934 to Audrey and Ramon Breeden. And whereas Ramon Breeden Jr. graduated from the University of Virginia's McIntyre School of Business with a bachelor's of science degree in commerce. And whereas after college, Mr. Breeden taught math for the police or Richmond Public Schools, but he knew he was destined for more. So he educated himself by reading books on building, construction and finance. And whereas the Breeding Company was created in 1961, starting from the trunk of his Pontiac convertible and using converted office space in the back of a grocery store, his desk was constructed from milk crates to the evolving from the single-family home building to designing, developing and managing apartment communities and commercial spaces. Today, the Breeding Company is one of the few vertically-integrated real estate development organizations in the country with a portfolio of over 20,000 apartments and 2 million square feet of retail and office space that have been owned, managed and developed. And whereas Breeden Realty has been named as one of the top commercial real estate firms in Virginia, Breeden Property Management is one of the top multifamily property management firms in the country. Breeden Construction is one of the top multifamily general contractors in the, in the country. And whereas Mr. Breeden and the Breeding Company have longstanding supporters of the arts, specifically the Neptune Festival Symphony by the Sea Series, he and his company have remained and they're presenting sponsorship since the program's inception. Whereas Mr. Breeden is an avid supporter of animals. Because of the many success, the success of his companies, he is able to contribute to many SPCA's and animal rescue organizations. Whereas on March 26, 2014, Mr. Breeden was named a Virginia Beach First Citizen by the Virginia Beach J.C.s acknowledging Mr. Breeden's presence and impact from the community from, from a professional, personable and charitable standpoint. This honor is given to one of the outstanding members of our community every year. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City, uh, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, along with this council, do hereby proclaim August 9, Raymond W. Breeden Day in Virginia Beach. And I call upon all citizens of Virginia Beach to join me in commending Mr. Breeden Jr. of the Breeden Company for his dedication and leadership for building an organization that services the citizens of Virginia Beach and surrounding areas. Thank you.
It's a long walk. But he can get started, boys. My speed, Bobby. Go ahead.
I want to--
The way was so much shorter. Get my aerobic exercise. And sir, on behalf of a grateful city, thank you for everything you have done and what your magnificent company continues to do. Thank you and God bless you. Please say a few words.
I'm honored by this presentation. I'm honored by this event. And my mind goes back into many, many years. And yes, we built a great company, but it's built off of great people. And my average employee, I'm told, has been there average 32 years. So some of the people have been there 50 or more years. Because you build a company with people that you respect and you respect them like you do yourself and you'll keep them and they'll do a good job. And so the only people we've ever let go are people who cheated on us. But other than that, we've got a great organization and great people. But it's been a real privilege to work in Virginia Beach because we're able to work with people who have a good knowledge of what development is all about. And that's been a real honor to do that and to work with people like the mayor and, and past people involved in the city council. I know Rosemary has helped us a lot. Lenwood has helped us a lot. And so we go way back with this organization and we've enjoyed everything that we do. And many times I've sit up at one of these podiums trying to get something through zoning. What? I don't understand why they turned it down, but you know, in any case, they did. But we, we work it through and we see the good in addition to the bad. So it's, it's, it's great. And when you see the good in people, you see the good in people and you see what they can do for you, it makes you good. And so I think it's been a real, real honor to work. We work, we work in many cities and I think Tim will tell you, we work probably now in some 15 or 16 different cities across the state and really throughout the nation on the East Coast. And working with this city has been a great honor. Some of the cities we work with, they have no knowledge of what they're doing and incompetent and so forth. But the city of Virginia Beach is pretty, pretty dang on good. And we brag about them where we go and we pit them up against other city councils where we go. So it's, uh, it's, it's a big honor. It's honor not only for me, but it's honor for me to work with people like yourself. You all look great. And Lenwood has been, friends and I have been with Lenwood for years and years. The only problem is he went to Ranoff Makin', but I'm forgiven for that. And I think, but I think it's been, it's been a lot of fun. And it's been a lot of hard work. And I worked with many of the past, present, past people on the city council. And I got a lot out of them and they helped me a lot, too. So thank you again. I'm honored by this presentation. I'm particularly honored by you, Bobby Dyer. You're, you're a great man. And so it's, and Rosemary, I thank all of you, all of you. Many times we've called you into our office and said, we have, we don't mind being turned down, but we just wanna be, present our plans, listen to our plans and tell us either how they can be improved or should we drop them? And we've dropped plans before. But I think we've got a lot of things on the horizon coming up, as you all know, in the city. And so we'll be right in there with them and trying to work them out to the best of the city. But I'm truly honored to work with, with all of you. And I think Mr. Moss and all of them, we've been in touch with them on various projects and they've been extremely helpful to us. But thank you again for this honor. And if I can ever help you, call for an appointment in my office. I'm just kidding.
The honor is mutual. And once again, thanks you and to your magnificent family and your team. You are indeed a legacy in Virginia Beach. You make us VB strong.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
If I may, real quick, I just gotta tell a quick story because you can't put everything about someone's life in a, in a resolution like this or proclamation. But Jake Jaycocks and I were looking for someone to sponsor the K-9 vest program on behalf of the Virginia Beach Police Foundation. And we went to a couple of people and didn't do very well. And then we went to see Mr. Breeden. And this line didn't hear about his love of animals. It's absolutely true because he jumped on that and became the sponsor for the K-9 vest program for Virginia Beach Police Department.
We put bulletproof vests on all the animals, police animals. Not only in this city, but Portsmouth and other cities, too.
Well, we, we thank you so much for that. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment? Rosemary, please.
The Symphony by the Sea Series has been a really wonderful thing for the residents and the tourists alike. And I know you've got one coming up next week and I, I hope to be there.
All right. Come to those concerts, they're great. And I think the next one is at Frank Sinatra Music. So that'd be great. I can dance with you on the side.
There we go. Don't you love it when a plan comes together? Thank you all. Mr. Breeden, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to our public hearings. And the first one is the creation of eight new precincts, modification of polling precinct, district bounding, uh, boundaries and changes of three polling locations. Uh, any speakers?
Yes, sir. One speaker, Barbara Messner.
Good evening.
Now you have the timer. Cool. Okay. Creation of eight new precincts. And I, the reason I didn't make the 2 o'clock is I watched the comments about, uh, you know, the elections. And I know you spent at least 10 million on the voting districts. And outside law firms, not just air law firms. I oppose the change of the polling stations. I oppose Ms. Wilson's idea to have, to name them. It's confusing enough the way it is. And some of us don't have a representative for the school board. And the way the maps were drawn is outrageous with the little cutouts. And I heard y'all talking about Ms. Henley, you know, informing people. And I think it was Mr. Moss talked about, you didn't say how much, but you spent on the postcards. I didn't get a postcard a couple of years ago on the, the public meetings. I didn't get any from the voter registrar. I didn't get any from y'all. The only one I have is from a friend who got hers. And I think the maps are horrible. You know, we need to see the streets. So I'm opposed, um, I'm opposed to your use of outside law firms. I think it's like 40 or 50 law firms over 20 years that you've used. And I think there's a conflict of interest for you to use our money to change something that a judge ruled. Whether, I don't like it. I don't like the ward system and I think they should all be at large. I think our election should be back in May. But you don't, you don't ask the citizens what they want. So, thank you.
Any other speakers?
That's all the speakers on this item, sir.
Okay, moving on to number two, the declaration and sale of excess property at southeast intersection of Market Street and Columbus Street.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Barbara, come on back.
Okay. Excess property. You own most of the property. You buy and sell your real estate brokers with air land and air money. And sometimes you lease property, like the Maddox's properties in the 31st Street Hotel. 99-year lease, which is illegal for city property. 99-year lease, and then you use it for entertainment to fill the hotel rooms. So I'm opposed of your constant sale of what you consider excess property. We have uncontrolled growth, flooding, pollution. The, the bays are closed. And here you talk about, you know, SPCA in the city and rescuing dogs. You don't rescue humans. Dogs can be recycled and you make a lot of money with that in the, you're constantly clearing the shelters. There's hardly anybody in the homeless shelter. That was 30, $30 billion. And it's regional for seven cities. So Market and Columbus Street is town center. That was opposed because of traffic. And, you know, we built at least three parking garages for them. All the parking garages at the oceanfront aren't for us. Like I said, and when I come back up, I'll show you the pictures. I've already, and y'all said you haven't heard from anybody. If you would open your emails and respond, you would know that I'm, I let you know how I feel. And it isn't just the civic leagues that have a vested interest in what goes on in their city. We drive all over the city. We go different places. FedEx, post office when they're working, which is rare. So you shouldn't be selling your property and you shouldn't be leasing it to Cox and Verizon and then they pass on the bills to, to the residents. Code enforcement is MIA. I've sent you the pictures of the venture managed property, Oceana Crossings, where the police brewery is. Ms. Wooten and Ms. Henley both came out there. Ms. Henley's the only one that voted no. But it's disgusting back there. Somebody needs to go back there. They, they moved some of the trash that was around it, but it's still seeping stuff. There's a dialysis center and nothing but bars and restaurants.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll read the speaker policy. I want to remind everyone that city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker may, uh, will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If the speaker wishes to address multiple consistent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Okay, um, are there any speakers on the consent items that we're talking about?
Yes, sir. Barbara Messner. And Mayor and Vice Mayor, councilmembers, this will just confirm that the only item being pulled from the consent agenda for separate consideration is Order of Resolutions Number Three.
Ms. Messner, we gotta get you a front row seat.
Ms. Messner, the only item that is being pulled, she will speak on all items except for number three, J3.
Okay, and this doesn't include planning? This is--
No, this is all items except for J3.
Okay, so it includes planning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm glad y'all think it's funny. You know, I didn't get to speak on the, on the candidates at 2 o'clock. But see the dinosaur? Some of these people have been here since the dinosaurs and we should have, we should have 65-year, uh, year-old limits. These are the pictures of, of the waste. Public works can't keep up with the waste. Speaking of waste, here you are with the, the library people giving away books to tourists. You know, what about the poor kids in some of the areas that some, certain council members seem to think are left out? Okay. I've already spoken on the, the districts, which applies to, I don't think anyone should be appointed or reappointed to council or considered if they've been voted out or if they're over 65.
Please stick to the items being discussed.
Okay, J1 is precincts, elections. You know what that is, right? Okay. Sorry, but you know, it's impossible to be here for everything. Okay. And Mr. Belucci, I heard him talking about-- And Mr. Belucci, I heard him talking about overdose awareness, grandstanding. He was funded by Bay locals, and they were allowed to operate and have alcohol delivered, which created a lot of problems for people. Drugs and alcohol are problems. And I heard you talking about, you know, doing something finally, rec centers for the kids. You need to curb the alcohol. You didn't curb it during the pandemic. And I'm opposed to you partnering with United Way, private psychiatric, Centerra. Okay. Designation of city highways for golf carts. That's ridiculous. You worry about public safety. How many people get run over even when they stay in their lanes? Okay. Closing portion of 18th Street between Pacific and Arctic Avenue. You shouldn't be closing any portions of roads. Okay. Appropriate 240,878 to Ocean Park Volunteer. They're volunteers. We already pay for, you know, police, fire, and rescue. We don't pay them enough. Otherwise, we wouldn't have had the, and take care of them. We wouldn't have all these vacancies. Appropriate almost 2 million from Tourism Corporation to Convention and Visitors Bureau, marketing efforts. You know, there was a time before 95 when we started having problems that the city didn't advertise. And we don't use air money to advertise for the private hotel and private restaurant industries. They were bailed out during COVID. I hope one day we have somebody that will do a real audit. Okay, transfer 100,000 from the General Fund Constituencies Department of Cultural Affairs. Your idea of cultural affairs, Mocha, the boardwalk, all this graffiti, you have, you have something on TV. You know, for people to notify you if something's dirty. It's your job if a bus place is dirty. But you took in millions of dollars that you use for other things for the victim families, and it shouldn't be coming out of cultural affairs. You know, it should have come out of all the money that you took in that was supposed to go to the victim families. So I think this whole thing violates free speech and due process, giving me only six minutes if there's nobody else that wants to speak. Atlantic Development, WPL, RAC, Billy Almond, Brian Large, subdivision, two lots on 73rd Street. I heard Lily White Linwood, excuse me, talking about meeting with the civic leagues. The individuals should count. You know, all of you get my emails, but I think you just have either the clerk or your attorneys read them. Ms. Wooton has replied a few times, Mr. Belucci in the beginning. But you shouldn't be approving anything if you can't keep the city clean and safe and stop the flooding. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Vice Mayor, would you be so kind to do the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances and resolutions, number one, ordinance to amend City Code Section 10-1 to create eight new precincts, rename the precincts, and relocate three polling locations, and authorize maintenance upon precinct lines to conform with recent district boundary changes, and to request a waiver to administer a split precinct. Number two, a resolution to, in observation regarding International Overdose Awareness Day requested by Councilman Belucci. Number four, ordinance to amend City Code Section 7-66 regarding designation of city highways regarding golf cart operation and posting of signs. Number five, ordinance to amend City Code Section 18-108.2 regarding license code for mobile food vending. Number six, ordinance to extend the date to satisfy the conditions regarding closing a portion of 18th Street between Pacific and Arctic Avenues. Number seven, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property known as Black Duck Inlet and a five-foot public utility endangerment easement at the rear of the, of the 321 Black Bay Crescent regarding to remove and replace a boat lift and four eight-foot wood piles, wood pier, and wood bulkhead. Number six, ordinance to appropriate 240,878 to the Ocean Park Volunteer Fire and Rescue Unit regarding interest-free loan to purchase two replacement ambulances. Number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate $1,930,000 from the Virginia Tourism Corporation to the FY 2022-23 Convention and Visitors Bureau operating budget regarding marketing efforts. Number 10, ordinance to accept and appropriate $221,642 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2022-23 Department of Human Services operating budget regarding permanent supportive housing program. Number 11, ordinance to accept and appropriate $58,750 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to FY 2022-23 Department of Human Services operating budget regarding support staff retention for substance use, substance use, and mental health programs. Number 12, the ordinance to transfer $100,000 from the General Fund Reserve for Contingencies to the Department of Culture Affairs to sort 531 memorial design stipends and additional facilitation services, including a memorial liaison to families and survivors.
Can I open a public hearing on planning?
Yes. Number one, Atlantic Development Associates LLC and WL Ventures LLC for variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulation regarding a subdivide two lots at 11173rd Street, District 6, and that is for indefinite deferral. Number two, SXCW Properties 2 LLC, tract number NLLC for conditional rezoning from Ag 2 Agriculture District to Conditional B2 Business District and a conditional use permit regarding car wash facility at the southeast corner of Sandbridge Road in Fisher Arch, east of 1973 Sandbridge Road. And that's, number three, Hunter's Mill Apartments LLC regarding Hunter's Mill Apartments LLC and Ladderburg Square LLC for conditional rezoning from A18 Apartment District and B2 Community Business District to Conditional A18 Apartment District at 397 Brixton Drive, Parcel West at 5444 Virginia Beach Boulevard, and triangular parcel between 397 Brixton Drive and 500 Aylesbury Drive. Number four, Catherine Ann Olivas and Catherine Olivas and Jessica McGowan for conditional use permit regarding a family daycare center at 2717 Inglewood Lane. Number five, Glorious Grooming LLC, Joda H. Goodman Estate for conditional use permit regarding home occupation at 140 South Avenue. Number six, Thomas Mark Goldsbury for conditional use permit regarding home occupation at 1140 Tree Fern Place. Number seven, Robleski Art LLC, Oceana Partners LLC for conditional use permit regarding a tattoo parlor at 1329 Oceana Boulevard, Suite 110. Number eight, 365 Tattooing LLC, Little Neck Towers LLC for conditional use permit regarding tattoo parlor at 3500 Virginia Beach Boulevard, Suite 610. And number nine, U.S. Surf Company, Inc., Sensations Realty LLC for alternative compliance regarding outdoor recreational facility and reoccurring outdoor special events at 2017 Arctic Avenue and 317 20th Street. I move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, in any other discussion, the vote will be open.
The vote is open. Mr. Holcomb may have your vote. I'm sorry, Ms. Henley, Councilmember Henley may have your vote.
I did.
Thank you. By a vote of 10 to 0, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, thank you. We had, do have an item, you know, that we will now call, and that is for an ordinance to award $5,000 to Community Services Micro Grant by giving with Golden Hand Incorporated, Ray's Support Stop the Violence Events. Okay?
Mayor, we have three speakers. The first speaker is Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Latonya Snow.
Good evening, Mr. Adams. Mr. Tahai? It's blinking eight minutes. I think you want to reset it. Okay. I didn't start talking yet.
Could you please start?
If you, she would reset it to three minutes.
It was reset.
You can't set it until I start talking, and she's still doing something. It's, it's two and a half minutes. I want it reset. I took the time to drive here. I want it reset. This is ridiculous.
Please proceed.
It's kind of hard to without telling you what most people think of you. Micro Grant, Stop the Violence. You've had 16 or 17 years to help stop the violence. You go to other cities. You know, you haven't set any curfews. You haven't done anything for the kids. All the events, they have to go to the oceanfront and pay money. You haven't done anything. We need to enforce the laws. Everything isn't a party, a nonstop event. We can't afford that. Like I said, the trash. Every time you approve something, there's extra trash for Public Works. And, you know, Bay Mechanical, one of your buddies? This is 31st Street? And this is, we should have a beach just for the kids, not for dogs. You know, it only takes a little bit of pollution to contaminate entire waterways. I'm glad you think everything's funny.
The next speaker is Latonya Snow. And after Ms. Snow is Jay Boone.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is a very nice building that we're in. So I appreciate you considering the grant for $5,000. That's a nice gesture. But as she said, that's not a dent in the problem that we have. Mrs. Harris is here. You know, we've been here several times. So what are you going to do as a problem for the whole group? There's so many TVs in here. Some outside, the bathroom is lovely. I mean, we got to invest in our community. There are empty chairs in here. Why we couldn't stay over there? We don't need this. You got to really take the time to say, okay, I'm investing in the community and take it serious. What's $5,000 I supposed to do? And what you got from Ms. Harris? Did you call her? We haven't had lunch, haven't had a mayor's meeting. Newark City, the Newark Gang Task Force, it's not the Gang Task Force, but you know, I'm talking about Street 10 came to Norfolk. Why are we not doing that here? Norfolk has a micro mini grant. Y'all don't have that here. Where are the programs at here to keep it going on consistency? Right? Breathe in it and breathe it out. But I'm being for real, right? A lot to digest. But they have it over there. I'm having an event in Norfolk. I had to plan it, but you guys have the money for it. So how's it consistently going? How are we going to stop the violence by just giving $5,000? Like, is that the plan? Or you have like something different coming? No answer? Think about it?
No, I'll be making my comments when I make the motion.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, that's my thought on it, because, I mean, we know it's out there. So we appreciate you guys giving it to us. But, I mean, that don't, that's not a dent in the big problem, okay? So we appreciate it, but you got to make the scale way higher than what it is. Okay, so hopefully, I mean, I know we're going to rule in favor of it because it's necessarily needed, but something bigger has to come of this. We got this nice building, okay? I appreciate you guys. Thank you for welcoming to your house.
The next speaker is Jay Boone. And after Ms. Boone is Alicia, Alicia Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would, I want to say, I understand where the efforts are coming from. I understand where the micro grant is coming from. I think that not just Virginia Beach, but the seven city, 757 in general has an issue with putting the priorities of tourists, developers, even businesses in general over top, over just everyday citizens. And I only say that because, you know, what about the citizen that doesn't have the connections to call upon? Maybe doesn't have a nonprofit, doesn't have a small business. They are literally just surviving, and their family members snatch from them. And there are no resources there for them. There's no one to call. The police don't reach out, and they don't know who actually took their loved one from them. And they have to walk in the community every day, come before council, and not get answers. I just wonder, what about them? I'm glad, again, that you are putting your money there and you are helping. And I know that the money will go to a good cause, and she will do great things with it. But I just, again, I wonder about the everyday citizen and what precedent, precedent this sets when the only time that there is any initiative taken is when somebody has something that maybe is motivating you to make a decision. So, again, there are many times where I've not thought that you guys were motivated by anything to do something right in the terms, especially for gun violence in this community. But at least now I know that you are motivated by something. I wish that you were more transparent with that part of it and told us exactly what motivates you to make decisions so that we can actually speak accordingly into that and maybe get some resolve to a lot of the issues that we are fighting for day in and day out. Again, I resonate the same things that Tanya said here. This building is beautiful. It's great, shiny, it's new. But I hope with all the new monitors and the cameras and everything that you are also putting the money towards actually solving these issues that we come forward to talk to you many times. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alicia Harris.
Hello.
Good evening, Ms. Harris.
Hi, hello, everybody. How y'all doing today? I hope today is wonderful. Well, I'm standing here because I don't disagree with you giving the grant. That's wonderful. You know, I'm sure she's going to use it to her best advantage. But I'm upset because hers happened a little while ago, and mine's happened a year ago. And I've been coming here, and I'm asking for anything. Because, yeah, $5,000 is good. It won't bring my child back. But I've been trying to get something in place for other family members that they would not be treated according to the habit that I have been treated. I know, you know, it's a lot of whatever, but it's not fair. When I asked for the memorial, you told me I can't do that because I can't do it for just one. But you're doing it for just one now if you give her the grant, and it's not fair. I have an LLC, self-care improvement. I'm trying to help people that's been traumatized, any kind of trauma, because I'm traumatized. You know, I know you can't compare, but this pain is not going away, Barb. It's not. And you said Shayla Harris Task Force? We haven't got together about that. We haven't talked. So I'm just saying it's not fair. If you're going to do it for one, I feel as if you should consider to do it for all, you know? It's been a year, and my family has nothing. No answers, no closure, no nothing. So I would have a function, you know? If, if, if it was honored to me, I, you know, I want to help the environment and the community because trauma and mental health is so important. And I didn't know how important it was till I was going through it myself. All three of my children are going through counseling and therapy. We can't, we can't live. So I'm just asking you to consider, if you're going to do it for one, consider doing it for all. Thank you. And I appreciate you all.
Appreciate you all coming.
Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay, now I think, you know, people come out. I'm going to be passing the gavel over to the Vice Mayor because I'm going to be privileged to make the motion on this. And, but, you know, maybe a point of clarification going forward. I got involved with Golden Hands, you know, over a year ago. You know, I went to a Thanksgiving dinner that they helped sponsor for a lot of the homeless. I saw the quarters that they were in that were distributing hundreds, if not thousands, of diapers to children, helping out with food banks, helping people with food and everything. And so, you know, I think a lot of the answers, and, you know, to our valued guests that were just up here speaking, you know, I hope you can go back and watch the presentation we had from former Chief Savara about the mayor's task force that we have going, that Vice Mayor Wilson is taking care of. We are proactively working on things, and I hope you go back and do look at it. But in terms of fixing the problem and working with the other mayors around him, Ms. Harris, I will be inviting you to our next September meeting to join us with the other mayors. You know, the frustrating thing for everybody is, first of all, we got to admit violence knows borders. So it's going to take a collective. But be assured, the city of Virginia Beach has been moving and trying to address a lot of the problems. And the other thing we have to admit is that if there was a simple solution, it would have been done. But I think the important thing, if we take away a message from what, you know, former Chief Savara said, you know, we're going to be looking at the things, to give you things to do, whether it be enhanced, you know, activities at the rec centers, getting into the schools and after-school reading programs and a number of other things. But I think this is where it's going to really count for you and the other folks that have gone through the tragedies. Is the next part is going to be the strong community engagement. And a very large part of that is going to be reaching out, especially to families who have been negatively impacted. You know, I was at a mayor's group today on a totally different thing, and I, one of the mayors mentioned they neither have a group or something going on in Norfolk where it's multi-city, you know, with a number of counselors and some other folks where, you know, victims, you know, families can go to. This is certain things that we, you know, we learn by best practices. But once again, let me just say that, you know, when Sherri Johnson approached me a while ago to help out, I was at the grand opening of her new office, and I think that was six months ago. And then regrettably, she had a family tragedy herself and having trouble pay the rent. And, you know, once again, we got to keep these organizations going. You know, the nonprofits are very, very strained during, you know, the tough, tough economic times. But you were right in your assertion, this is but a first step. If we can start leveraging and bringing the faith-based communities together and instead of operating in silos, but actually getting together and work with each other to help with family intervention. You know, I, I wish I could say this any other differently. You know, by the time you call 911 and the police, something bad already happened. But if somehow we can preemptively and proactively, you know, work with the families that need help, you know, the children and the people in this world that are going through life not feeling any hope or not part of the American dream. We do that by maybe getting into the schools with conflict resolution, you know, better job training programs. And the other thing is, you know, we're definitely going to be looking forward are bringing higher-paying jobs, not the ones that just pay for minimum wage, but actually, you know, going over to living wage and above. You know, that, that's what gives people esteem, that what gives people a reason to wake up. But once again, what's going on in this country is a national crisis. What is going on in this region is a crisis. And, but, we can't fix everything, but what we can do is try to make things better in Virginia Beach. And, you know, there's an old saying, you know, the journey of a thousand miles begins with the first step. And we're going to try to help Sherri out, and we're going to try to help her get into networks that will also help her to continue not only to survive, but to thrive and go forward. But it's going to be bringing our community together, leveraging the resources. But once again, I think we are trying. And believe me when I say, I have been involved with this, this organization for over a year. They have been helping me out with a homeless, a formerly homeless disabled vet who is bed bound. And they went in over a period of months and brought this guy food. And so I'm motivated to help them. So, you know, with that being said, and my commitment that we, we will continue to move forward together as a city and individuals, I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay?
Any discussion down here?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, the voting board should be open?
All righty.
The vote is open. Councilmember Henley, I need your vote, please.
It's just not working.
Thank you. By vote of 9 to 0, approve the ordinance.
Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, at this point, we have no other appointments today. Do we have any unfinished business? Any new business? Oh, yes, John, please.
I was at an event where I was having a conversation with a person who was an IT person for Bank of America. And, and I watched their CEO on CNBC a couple of weeks ago. But just to share, their bottom line pay is $25 an hour. And when they have the people that clean their buildings, the contracts have to pay their people $25 an hour. I only mention that because I did share with you earlier about this gas station with the 200 gas pumps, Buc-E's. I'm sure there's some Texas people out here that know what Buc-E's are. But I shared their sandwich board. So I just think maybe we should be a little bit more ambitious about when we're engaged on some of these places. And I realize Bank of America made a lot of investments in technology and drove down their employment numbers as they made those higher wages. But I just think we can't lose sight of what is really going on out there and about, and investing in our people, which I've always talked about that. But I think we're going to have to be a little bit, look at that differently and also look at a productivity to follow that. Because I think anyone that says little living wages, it's really not $20 an hour. Let's just be honest. If you really look at all the stuff that comes off the top. So I think, I just think, as we're looking forward to anything, balancing other things, Mr. Mayor, I think we just have to look at, you know, some of our own employees that are below that $20 an hour, and maybe we need to be doing something. That's just, just a thought. But I have been seeing more and more talking to people in the corporate world, and I think we're a little bit behind. But you got to get the numbers down too at the same time. So anyway, I just wanted to share that I thought that was very interesting. They were demanding their vendors to pay decent wages also. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Moss. Okay, any other unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, we're adjourned, and we're going to go to open mic.